Welcome to our May 9th, Tiverton School Committee meeting. Has anyone signed up for open forum?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Pacheco, just come and state your name and your address.
Hi. My name is Shalke Pacheco and my address is Medical Park. I'm here to ask my friend Cody. Cody is, he's graduated this year. He's always been semi-coastal and he's always struggled very long. This year, they decided to get rid of all the general classes at the high school and they put him all in qualified practice. So, due to that, he is having a really difficult time. And he also has a very full schedule. One day, he went to Rogers, which put him back for one credit course that year. Another year, he failed another, another class. So, that was all added into pretty much his senior year. So, he has a pretty full goal this year. And then we add on senior projects, we add on, you know, community service hours. So, the kid is stretched really thin. I've spoken with Principal Ashley and his guidance counselor. And we're trying, we're working hard to see if he can get somewhere to graduate. And that's where our goal is here. Although, he's been working really hard, trying to keep up with everything. During this class, there was one class that was keeping him from basically graduating. So... I spoke with Mr. Ashley and the guys told me that he was like a ninety. And now he's graduating. Right now, he's a twenty-eight. All right. About three weeks ago, Cody came to me and mentioned that he has friends that was offered a custom packet. I do not know a reason why he was offered this packet. I asked him, asked him, you know, if it was a possibility for Cody. He said that it was not a possibility for him. And then today, Cody came home again and mentioned that another friend of his was offered that same packet. And Cody's a hard worker. He comes to school every day. He works hard and he's really trying to pull everything off. He brought in a lot, a lot of work just yesterday. Hasn't gotten graded yet, but hoping that twenty-eight is going to fall a little higher. But, you know, at this point, he's, he's looking at, he's after graduating. He's really, he's... So, we're just asking if there's any way that he can go through this special test to see if he can graduate. Because it's all he wants. So, it's all he wants. Sorry.
We understand. My, and sorry to kind of, we don't actually respond to comments in the open forum. That, that's the, the policy as it stands. But, I, I'm sure Mr. Ashley and Mr. Ririck can speak with you later about the, about the issue. But, the, the setting of the open forum is to really just allow people to, unless I'm mistaken, I am, I believe I'm correct here. It's, it's, so we, we can't get into matters of policy or school committee actions. This is, and, but we do hear your, your concerns. And, and I think I can speak on behalf of everyone and say that we sympathize deeply and appreciate your, your strength of character in coming and speaking with us.
Is there anything that I can do? Is there anything above me that I should do?
I, I believe the, the first step is to speak with Mr. Ashley and Mr. Ririck. But, you know, our, our numbers and addresses are all available as well and, and certainly hope that we can help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay.
I would like to make a motion to move item five, B2. I'd like to move it out of, pick an, off of the consent agenda, please.
Second. This is consent agenda, so we don't discuss. Okay, all those in favor of both motions? Can we take a vote in unison? Okay, five zero, okay. Mr. Ashley? Or, Mr. Ashley? Mr. Ririck?
Someday, maybe.
You never know.
You never do. Paternity leave, Adam Tracy, long-term social studies teacher at Tiverton High School, Lauren Teeter, long-term math substitute at the middle school, William Curry, long-term contact teacher at Picassett, Amy Mullen.
Correspondents? Oh, okay.
I'd like to make the motion to move five B2 to the next agenda, please.
Do I have a second?
Oh, I thought you said you seconded it.
No, I said, do I have a second?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that's just unusual.
Yeah, I know, I know. I just don't know. I do have, just a question that I want to check, I want to go back and check, that's all.
So, you just want, you have some clarification?
Right, and I want to just move it to the next agenda. Yep.
Okay, all right. So, kind of a vote, all those in favor?
Thanks, folks.
Okay. Correspondents, are you good?
You have a document from the Office of the Governor regarding Linda Larson being named a member of the Trade Association representing Rhode Island employers.
Okay. Mrs. Black, I think, want to say anything?
No, I'd just like to congratulate Mrs. Larson. We all started here together, leaving Tiverton and going to all the different cities and towns and state level. And they recognized her talents and now she's on this board. And she can help Tiverton and all the other school districts in the state to connect the kids with the jobs. We went to the skills gap when it first kicked off and found out, they said we weren't giving the kids the training for the jobs that were out there, jobs that we don't even know exist yet or out there. And Linda's going to find out what they are and tell us about them. And then we'll get everything in our district so the kids will have what they need. It's a very, very, congratulations to Linda. Thank you.
Congratulations, Linda. Okay. Old business, I'll entertain a motion to move up seven B and all of eight to proceed, yeah, to proceed seven A.
Motion to move all, move seven B and all of eight.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay.
Can I just ask a question first?
Yep.
And this is just procedural. The approval of minutes is understood?
Correct.
Okay, because I need to abstain on one of them.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Because I was absent actually from two minutes.
Four twenty-eight.
Four twenty-five, four twenty-eight.
All right.
I apologize, but...
So, just on the vote on the consent agenda, Mrs. Barnworth abstained from approval of the minutes of four twenty-eight and five.
No, four twenty-five.
Four twenty-five.
Right.
And four twenty-eight.
Yes.
Okay. And so, for those minutes, the vote was four zero. For the other minute, for the rest of the consent agenda, was five zero.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Seven B? Update on middle school and high school renovations?
Yes, Mr. DeQuatro is here to give a brief update as to where we are with the project. We had a meeting last week with the building committee and Dave's going to update the committee.
So, just giving an update of what we've done. So far, we went out to bid for a commissioning agent. So, what exactly a commissioning agent is, it's a separate party that goes out and basically looks at everything that not only we are doing, but also through construction. It's a requirement by RIDE and it's a kind of built and suspended. So, you have an engineer that develops systems and then the commissioning agent then checks those systems during the design and during the bidding and also during the construction to make sure that it's installed for the design and the design meets all the requirements and ships. And that's a RIDE requirement. So, we did that last week, bids are due on the fifteenth, which I believe is Monday. And so, we're going to get the lowest qualified bid. We've sent them out to four different representatives, people that we know and have worked in this past and the past, that can do the job on time and within the schedule. We've handed out the proposal, which talked about the different degrees and phases of construction and also discussed the timeline for the project. And that's it. So, I want to talk about, if anyone has any questions on commissioning, or what it is, why we need it, or what that, I don't know if I could be, presumptuous even ask for, for us to get the lowest qualified bid if we didn't join award. Is that something you could be, you could be, you could be...
I would come back to the building committee, inform us, because we have a meeting on the twenty-second. I can place the appointment or the recommendation to the school committee on the twenty-third for whoever you folks have graded out as the company you want to, the committee to hire.
Full better amount by prices and the quality of the proposal, the specifications. Then we'll look up to a couple of the finalists, we'll call them, make sure they understand the scope, get that right and send the back a letter of, of tenor's, like, to them and then divide them after the committee and give that same agenda to the building committee for the forum.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Thanks.
Thanks, Dave.
New business communication training schedule for support staff?
Yes, as part of our communications policy, one of the, as I have in the memo that I provided the committee, one of the goals is to improve our customer service to our, all the stakeholders for the school department. And one of the things that we talked about was, and one we're recommending tonight, is that we offer a training session to all our Council ninety-four employees who are secretaries and our clerks who would have interactions with members of the public so that we would have a unified way of answering the phone, addressing people at the counter, learning some skills, because a lot of these, especially at the high school and the middle school, our secretaries are extremely busy, and how to kind of prioritize what things they need to, you know, how to handle things. You've got the phone, you've got parents, and work on some strategies so that all our, including the folks in my office, everybody would receive this training. And Mrs. Delcourt has experience doing this and working with the military. And she's here just to kind of give you a brief overview. We talked about this at our communications meeting. And I'll turn it over to Julie.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Julie Delcourt, Women's Communications Manager for Tiverton School Department. And the promise of the training is known to be experience. And that word is really important because it's really matching the experience that we had. And that's one of the most impressive things that I see every day and what I do and brag about on our social media, is that amount of tenure, the amount of, of time that people spend in their position. It's something I'm very proud of, to see people not only graduated from our system but also came back to look in some aspect or another and really contribute things on their passion and love for this particular community. So, the communication plan, as Mr. Delcourt said, is specific to kind of bringing Tiverton to the next level, but matching the customer's experience with the exceptional experience of our, and we'll start with what I would like to call the ambassadors to our, our school system, our administrative assistants. So, because they aren't the ambassadors and there's some significant amount of tenure and talent in there, I think it's important to start with them first. And that, we'll start with kind of recognizing the importance for them in particular of them being that first point of impact for this people or the customer who's walked in the door. But forwarding that through every single department, it's really about the importance of their role in this business. So, where does their role fit in as far as the grand experience of the Tiverton School Department regardless of where the customer interacts with the Tiverton School Department to the match? So, the buzzwords, if you will, are something known as point of impact. A great point of impact that I first learned when I first started this position was that Principal Ashley, we were walking down the hallway and we were, I was the one I listened to, so I was learning about the personality of Tiverton High School. And there was a piece of garbage on the ground and without hesitation, he was walking, he was showing me, he never skipped a beat. He simply grabbed a piece of trash because, you know, it was there and most importantly, that showed me he had pride in school. And that's a point of impact. That impressed me, that sent a message without saying a word. The next is probably the most important part of the training, which is the self-assessment part of this training. So, it's based on the Shapley Communication format known as the Store Lunch Day. So, it's giving personalities a little bit more of an understanding. So, you first learn about yourself and then you learn about the style of communication that works effectively based on the personality type of the person that you're communicating with. As I said in, to the communications, the communication group, we, this is not something that will just affect them positively in their work space. It'll actually affect them in other aspects of their life. They'll notice things more and most importantly, they aren't doing anything that they don't already do. It's just really kind of making this science. So, we've done this into a little, this is what we were, we were taught to do, how to communicate. But it's just really applying the science to it and making sure that, as I said, the communication experience of the visitor matches the substantial amount of experience that we have here with our ambassadors. They'll then go through the concept of a customer, that we do have internal customers, we have external customers. And we need everybody to do their job, we need everybody to understand that they're really in business for themselves. They're additional workers at the school department to represent how, well, their engagement based on their interaction and how they communicate with everybody around them. Lastly, we're going to talk about the atmosphere and, you know, the non-level components of communication. Is their surroundings sending a message we want received by our visitors? And again, the ambassadors that I speak of in all five schools, so that point of impact, that first line of communication, I think they do a great job. And I really am excited about starting them down because I think they have a substantial amount of knowledge on how Tiverton can get to the next level. So, that's why, one of the reasons why we wanted to start with that is working with order of the actual external customer's experience. Because the first point of impact is, in fact, buzzing your cell phone. Lastly, there's really fine tuning things like having an auto signature in both your cell phone, if you use that device, as well as your Gmail account so that when you're communicating, you're offering that amount of information automatically and keeping your customer from working hard to find out how to get in touch with you. We're going to have a game plan together because, again, this is, this training is really about harvesting the experience of these tenured ambassadors and making sure that they decide the scripts that they will use answering the phone, how they see this, this best practices. And once that game plan is in place, I think it's vital, based on my training experience, to follow up. You know, we really work hard in making sure that this is tailored to the educational world. And so, we were thinking about nine-year training further along in the year to make sure that what we put in place, that game plan, is applicable. We need to fine tune it, we need to change something. So, in closing, the goal is to piece by piece, just really gather from our subject matter experts. The last, the example I can illustrate my point best is, rather than posting articles and finding the experts outside of our department, I love that we've leaned on Mrs. Marshall for that recipe, for that high protein breakfast recipe. We've leaned on our health experts for that great tip on how to get the kids to have the best testing abilities during their testing. So, that's a little job. We're calling on their expert opinion and most importantly, putting it into action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Eight B unpaid meal charges.
Sorry, just before we move forward, just, so that's to inform the committee, that's what we're going to be proceeding with.
Okay.
Mr. Fiore will speak to the meal charge policy.
Unpaid meal charges.
Yes. This is a hot topic. I'm not sure how many of you have seen the, the national news, but the USDA is requiring all school districts in the country to adopt a unpaid lunch or meal policy. And basically, most, if not all, the districts have had a practice, but it hasn't necessarily been a formal policy. So, we need to commit a formal policy by the end of the fiscal year. So, I'm asking that the committee provide some direction and/or permission for the policy subcommittee to help draft a unpaid meal policy so we can proceed and comply with either documenting our current practices or making modifications and formally adopt a policy for this purpose.
So, who can even read webinars?
USDA is the one I'm going to be tuning into on Monday, and there's a second one, I believe, that is RIDE.
Can I plead a little ignorance?
Sure.
What is driving this?
The, the USDA is requiring any participants in a lunch program that's sponsored by them to formally document their unpaid meal policy. So, if we want to continue participating, which is basically getting our reimbursement for free and reduced lunches, we need to make a documented formal policy.
I guess I'm just wondering what the problem is that's being addressed.
I, I'm not sure if there is a problem. It's, they just, apparently, they weren't happy with some of the practices that they saw nationally. Or there was just such a variation on them that they wanted to have some consistency and be able to compare written policies.
So, they pushed it down in the state?
And locally, in most cases. They, they do actually give the states a, an option to adopt something statewide. Rhode Island hasn't done that.
And said let the locals do.
Correct.
So, so there's legislation in, you know, on the state level. And what was on TV was the cold grilled cheese, the cold cheese sandwich. And even worse than that, if they hadn't paid their bill, they'd throw their food away. So, that's just, you know, that's horrible. You know, they throw the trash.
Yeah, no, I, I...
So, that was, that was what...
Don't underestimate the banality of people.
What came on?
We generally don't have a significant issue with unpaid meals in Tiverton. And at the earlier, I'm sure if you recall, earlier this school year, we had a benefactor actually pay off everyone's balances. So, everyone started from zero.
Yes, they did.
At a point through, a month or two into the school year. But, and just to provide some perspective, I think between that point and now, our total balance for all students is about $800 for unpaid meals.
That's across all five schools?
Correct.
But the USDA says...
Yeah.
You have to have a policy.
Despite us having a practice that's worked, you know, successfully for years, we're now required to formalize it.
So, a couple of questions.
Sure.
What do we feel is the likelihood of a statewide policy being in place? I, I know, as Mrs. Black alluded to, one of the state representatives has placed some legislation out there to provide free lunch for all.
Even if that were to occur, I don't think that would remove the need for us to document our unpaid meal charges. I haven't heard anything at the state level that would preclude us from going ahead and having to adopt our own.
Okay. And I also noticed that within this writing, that we as a district would have the latitude to establish a different policy based upon age group.
Yeah, in fact, that's what our practice is now. We don't allow high school children, for example, to charge meals, but we do allow it at elementary and, and middle school.
So, you want to refer this to the policy committee?
Yeah, can we have a motion or do we need a district?
I need a motion to refer this to the policy committee, please.
Second?
Second.
And just for the point of order or point of the board, we need to have this done by our first meeting in June because our policy state that we have to have two readings, the first at the beginning of the month, then the second one. Plus, we also have a June thirtieth deadline set forward by the feds. We may have to meet again before the thirteenth to draft the policy.
That's fine.
And I do believe we have the interest of a principal, if not more than one, that's willing to, to help the policy subcommittee if it so chooses.
Good. Well, that would be nice.
Okay.
So, I will at least on May twenty-third at six, for whoever that principal wants, we'll start drafting.
Thank you.
They're all here. Okay. I'm just counting to see if they're all here. Okay, so whoever you are...
There may be more than one, yes.
Thank you.
Any of you, you're all welcome. One of you has to come. All right. All those in favor? Superintendent's report.
Yes, this was put forward, carried over to this meeting. As you probably are all well aware, RIDE has changed its assessment policy for the seventeen, eighteen school year. We will no longer have PARC testing, but we will have something called RI-CAS, Rhode Island Comprehensive Assessment System, which is supposed to mirror that of Massachusetts and as far as the questions and rigor and things of that nature. And that'll be in grades three through eight. And for the high school, students will be tested. Their scores will be used for reporting purposes, the PSAT and the SAT. Commissioner, and I'm sorry, Commissioner Wagner, in his, in his most recent fee, fee memo regarding this, stated that the PSAT and SAT scores will not be used for graduation requirements, won't be mandated. Districts can use them if they so choose to, but it's not going to be mandated by the state.
So, there will now be no test requirement to graduate?
Right, there hasn't been one since twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen.
Well, but it's been kind of...
They've had to take the test. That's, they're still going to, students are going to be not required, but encouraged to take RI-CAS and then the PSAT and the SATs.
But RI-CAS will only be administered in grades three through eight?
That's correct.
Not in high school?
That's the current plan.
So, there is no high stakes test that needs to be passed to graduate?
That's correct. As of right now.
I mean, this is, that's continued to hang over students' heads anyway.
Yes, as, as far as, you know, Commissioner Wagner...
Kind of kept on pushed down.
Yeah.
All right. And when you say mirror MCAS...
Supposed to, again...
Are you stealing it from them or...
I believe it's a licensing...
It's, it's, we, if you've talked to the folks from Massachusetts or some of the folks in their Department of Ed, they're, they've, they, they're not where Rhode Island is as far as, you know...
No one is.
The partnership so far. I believe we're working towards it, but it hasn't been finalized yet between Mass and Rhode Island. And the question, the question's, my understanding, what limited information we've been provided, is that it will mirror that in the sense it'll be the same types of questions that they offer in Massachusetts. We haven't seen anything yet, so we don't, we can't...
But this is all going to be up and running in less than twelve months?
Again, yes. A yes. And this is, in fourteen years, well, eighteen years, we've had four changes in the state assessment system.
Yeah.
And two in the last three years.
It's breathtaking, that's, that's...
Yeah, and everything, and, and again, what is left out, and, I mean, everyone will do their best as we always have, but what's left out is Massachusetts for twenty years invested hundreds of millions of dollars in training, in supporting districts. They have a more supportive way to fund their schools.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know, and all that.
And, but, it's, it's being portrayed so far that because we have the mass, the MCAS, our, our scores will be as good and that's simply not going to be accurate, at least not in the early years.
Okay.
And next, for the high school, the tutoring sessions begin the week of April twenty-fourth, those, the in-school tutoring sessions. Mr. Ashley and working with Mrs. Mullen and... Mr. Ashley and working with Mrs. Mullen and Mrs. Destrems, we were able to develop a in-school tutoring session where students, and I'll let Chris speak to it, but I believe most of the periods have tutoring sessions scheduled in. And they've been, you know, Chris, I want to congratulate Mr. Ashley for, and the guidance team to put that together, because that wasn't an easy task, putting that tutoring schedule into effect. And I have met with Mr. Ashley and the guidance and the department heads regarding the first scheduling run. I have a meeting tomorrow with guidance again to talk about the second run, because we keep, what's called tumbling the schedule. You keep putting the information in, so you, right now, we're at about a 65% success rate for scheduling, which isn't the worst, but it's not the best.
Scheduling of next year, you mean?
Yes, for next year. So that's underway at the high school. All the faculty, I've concluded all my faculty meetings. They were very successful. I enjoyed them a great deal. The feedback was very helpful. And for next year, I plan on doing it at least twice a year. Regional special ed, the consulting firm Futures from Springfield, Mass, that is underway currently. We believe it's going to be finished. They're going to finish their audit by the end of the month, and we should have a final report in June that we'll share with you as to what their findings are regarding how effective the region is and what recommendations they, they make to us, make to us so we can improve it. And the Career Center, we had our quarterly meeting back in April, and Newport is still going to stick with their late arrivals for their high school. But they've, again, have been very cooperative, working with the sending districts, and we will be still able to send our kids at the normal times to arrive at 7:30 and leave at 1:55, even though they start, I believe it's at 8:15.
So do our students lose out on instruction?
No, they, they give them an alternative elective. They are able to work it out so that they get a class while in that morning period. So that was, that was good news. The bad news, it's not bad that students are going there, but we have six additional students scheduled to attend full time for next year.
Right.
Which brings us up to 19.
Okay. How much does the cost per pupil?
14.
1.
No.
No, it's close, it's 60, they actually charge us more than our per pupil, so that the impact of that.
But it's less than their per pupil.
Is, is going to be probably 150 to 200,000.
Right.
That we weren't originally anticipating when we put the budget together.
Yeah.
Usually we're, we're estimating that, you know, seniors graduate, freshmen backfill that at a pretty consistent rate.
Right.
And again, that's right now. Once the kids go there, three of the six may stay, two of the six, so, but you have to.
Which is very common, but as of right now, those are the numbers we have.
So it's how much per student?
About 20,000.
20,000 per student, and so.
For the whole year. So typically, as Mr. Eric said, sometimes the new students will find they don't like it, so there will only be bills for the first quarter for those students if they return here.
They prorate the.
Okay. And we're having, we have 19 students that are going there?
We have 13 now, 19 for next year.
So we have six we did not anticipate.
A net increase.
Yeah.
Of six.
Of six, which is $120,000.
$120,000.
Okay, right, right, right. And of course, that does not translate into $14,000 in savings for us.
No, not at all, because, well, yeah, and mostly they're eighth graders.
And again, I want to thank Superintendent Jermaine and her staff for being able to accommodate, just not Tiverton, but all the sending districts, because this would have created a transportation issue for us, getting there later and picking them up later and bringing them back. Also, for students who have jobs, getting back at 2 o'clock's a lot different than getting back at 3:30, 4 o'clock, depending on traffic, which is difficult on the island in the afternoon.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Ashley, did you have anything else to add about the tutoring or the at-risk students?
Just to appreciate Mr. Eric's comments about really the team that we could put off together and continuing to do our, check the students, think to those students and find out exactly where the kind of part of these areas are, which I'm looking to. I don't have time to update right now, but we're kind of in the middle.
Right.
So.
No more than that. Two weeks. You're really into that. You do a question.
Okay. Could you elucidate for me exactly what the, the speaker was referring to in terms of a capstone project?
Yeah.
Or, or not?
I'm not sure if you mean capstone. I think we don't have a capacity to see your capstone.
No.
Keystone, maybe?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay.
For some individual students, specific individual plans or on a future, maybe might be online for a credit for coming.
I see.
And probably the fact that she was in that.
Okay.
She had lessons that had been, and.
I just, I just wasn't sure what she was talking, okay, what that was about. Okay.
Do you find you still have a good level of energy being put into this by the students involved?
Are the students, yes, yes, I do.
Maintaining it is my concern, right?
It's hard, it's a challenge.
Yep.
But I agree, for the most part, yes. That the students see that they, there's a standard that they have to meet, and at the same time, all of the teachers, you know, working their lives, are supporting them to help meet that. Today, for a simple, it's a big, significant deadline for our senior project. We have 20, 20 few teachers going hustling around the building, grabbing seniors one by dawn, checking their work contracts, reviewing portfolios, calling parents to say, without this piece, we need to do it, and so, I have a report that a number of students, they got to me, it was the very, very last meeting.
Hmm.
But they got to me. It's not 100%, so it's not, it's not what we like it to be, but they have to go through and announce again on everyone. The students are thinking about it, and we can just.
Okay, thank you.
Quickly, before we move on, I want to thank Mrs. Mullen and Mrs. Destrems, our NEA leadership. NEA can sometimes unfairly get a bad rap, especially in our community, and I want to thank them for their efforts in making sure that that in-school tutoring happened.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Interim Superintendent Assistant Superintendent's report.
Former interim assistant.
Suzette.
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 Let me tell you about my day.
So I'm just going to recap what you have in front of you. For the grants, I did complete the PLTW2 grant, and I've been working again on the Math and Science Leadership Partnership Grant. For meetings, I facilitated additional grade level meetings. I worked with the English Language Learners Teacher. We reviewed the access results, which is the English Language Learners Alternate Test Instead of PARC, and also facilitated two district PD committee meetings. The biggest thing that I was working on is this little thing called PARC, you may have heard about. We're in our last week of PARC assessment for most of our schools, and we only have four sessions left out of 72 total. And we do have a few student makeups left, but overall, this is our first year doing PARC online, and it has been an overwhelming success. The biggest interruptions, what we were really concerned about in our district is whether or not we were going to have any interruptions where schools would lose connectivity and student results would, would be lost. And we really did not experience any interruptions for entire schools during testing sessions. And I'd really like to thank everyone involved, from the superintendent to Doug, to our tech department, principals, teachers, staff, everyone, everyone pulled together, and it really just was terrific for the students. And we also not only have PARC, but we've also been administering some other assessments. The, on April 5th, we had SATs. AP exams were yesterday, and we started this week for grades four, eight, and 11, NECAP Science. So it's a little busy time. And I'd like to thank Superintendent Rierrick for giving me the opportunity to step in as interim assistant superintendent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like, I'd just like to recognize Suzette for the great job she did filling in for Amy. She, we didn't miss a beat with her stepping in, and she should be recognized for doing a great job, and we're going to miss having her around on a daily basis, but I know she's not far down at Fort Barton, so. We had our first principal superintendent conversation in a few months, so.
Great, well, thank you.
She's did a great job for us.
All right, and then we have the director of maintenance report. Oh, he is here. Mike's here. Hiding me out there.
No snow this time. No snow.
No snow for a long time.
Thank you.
Well, I have to sign notes, I'm going to do the self-capping. Hopefully I remember the likes of the middle school, the likes of the finish, hoping it will always be like. They're often working, everybody's high grade comment, we got a switch right over there now. The likes of the average. The learning to go here in the library is small, nobody really noticed.
No, I did not. Seems like it was always there.
Yeah, the way we planned, it is during the first week of, aside meetings with the heating engineers, electrical engineers, on aspects of the job, and we're going for each building, people, I keep making sure, we're supposed to be, and it's not supposed to be, I have another meeting tomorrow with the heating engineers, the middle school. So we're working on that. I'm just doing a big expansion that we've done. Play a little things that are normal. Unfortunately, we're still running it because of the, whatever it happens.
Yeah, that's true.
It just won't warm up.
That is, you go pretty hot. That is your time. Time is up. But I think that's about it, and I can think of other.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And Mike's been, again, as you mentioned, he's been working very closely with Dave DeQuatro and all the engineers and all the building people, giving them tours and of the two schools, getting us ready for the renovations.
And April's financial report?
Yes, thank you. I handed out to the committee the year-to-date financials through April. April's a pretty important month because most of the heating season is behind us, so I'm able to kind of pinpoint where, where some savings, if any, are left to offset some of our over-budget items. And the one I've mentioned a few times during the year is our out-of-district sped costs is about 200,000 higher than we had originally budgeted for. So after reviewing the, the results through April, I'm pretty confident that we're able to squeeze enough savings out of most of the line items that I've targeted to, to offset that, so I still think we're, we're on target for the year. And I'll be happy to answer any questions either tonight or at, at our next meeting regarding April, but I didn't see anything that really stood out as a significant variance from what we had anticipated through, throughout the fiscal year. Couple of other items I'm working on pertain to the school lunch policy. We're going to have a request to increase our school lunch prices by 10 cents before the end of the fiscal year. Per the USDA, there's a formula that you need to put in your pricing, and it basically tells you what you need to charge, so you're not subsidizing the, the free, the free and reduced, reduced program, isn't subsidizing the paid lunches. We've discussed the unpaid meal policy earlier tonight, and we'll also be reviewing our school lunch contract renewal before the end of the fiscal year, which I'm negotiating with, with Chartwell's now. I've also met with the treasurer regarding our bonding. We've had some questions that the financial advisor needed some assistance with, so we've provided those answers. And we have one more meeting with the bonding authority that I'll be attending with, with Mr. DeQuatro on the 18th, and hopefully that'll be the final stage before our, our bond is officially approved at the state level. And we have a couple of bids going out this week, one for custodial supplies, and we've just completed the middle school paving RFP, which will be in Sunday's paper. And that's pretty much what I've had going on.
Mr. Fiore, our trash is at month-to-month?
Yes, we're able to, we have a lot of flexibility with our trash contract, so if the town is your concern.
Because the town is, the town is doing this now.
Yeah, we'll be happy to provide any, you know, quantities or, if they want to have us join them, I'll be more than happy to look at the pricing.
Well, there'll be a new town administrator soon, so you'll be able to, and the DPW guy's very nice, so you could also.
Sure, no, we're always looking at opportunities to keep those costs down.
That's right, very good.
So Doug, the tuition to private schools, I think that's always timing, right?
Yes, yeah, in fact, we, we have.
What line item is that?
I'm sorry, 55630. So it shows that we've spent only 25%. It's on page two of our actual forecast.
Yeah.
And we attend 12 cents into our.
And with that, we also have a significant piece of those tuitions that are charged to a grant, so I basically have a credit in that line item that represents the grant, and we also have a piece of it that's charged to Medicaid. So that's pretty much exactly where we thought it was going to be at the beginning, or we've been forecasting about 2 million for out-of-district tuitions, and that's where, that's where it is. And usually, we're a little behind in paying our Met School as well. We always have discussions with them regarding the transportation that we're allowed to charge them, so those numbers are also a little bit behind. But I've pretty much put in there what, where they're going to be at the end of the year, and I don't see any, any big swings.
Are you anticipating that we're going to come out with a surplus, the share?
I, I think we're pretty close to break even. I'm not anticipating a balance, a significant balance, one way or the other. I think that over-budget item and sped was able to be, you know, recovered through a lot of other smaller accounts.
Are we still pursuing some sort of rebate from our bus?
Actually, we had some discussions on that today, and, and the answer is yes, and we're working on quantifying the exact number of runs and.
So that could help offset any.
It's a very small amount, though, because, you know, if, 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 yeah, I mean, for example, a bus is, you know, $331 a day, so, you know, you save half of that times maybe 10 runs were canceled. It's not going to be an earth-shattering number.
But they are at least trying.
Oh, yeah, they're accommodating us, yeah, and that won't be, yeah. In fact, we, we did have a meeting scheduled with them last night, but the representative from, for student management wasn't able to make it, so we're in the process of rescheduling that meeting that we had, that we had scheduled as a result of our last school committee meeting.
Any other questions? All right. Request to seek bids for building security upgrades?
Yes, we've talked about it previously, that we want, to improve our security at our all five schools. We want to create a system like we have here at the high school, where people have to get buzzed in twice before they can get into the main office areas. Currently, we have gone out and priced what would cost us to replicate the same systems at the three schools, Fort Barton, Pecassid, and Ranger, and they exceed the bid amount, so I'm requesting that we be allowed to go out to bid, so we can bring back a bid recommendation to the committee, so we can do the work over the summer. And again, Mr. Mendes has been working, one of the things that he is working on is he's working with the fire marshal in pursuit of a waiver, so that we could also implement the same type of system at the middle school.
And where do we stand on that? Because that's been ongoing.
Mike, you want to?
Where we stand on that, I've talked to him, we're waiting for a decision from him.
I've talked to him, we're waiting for a decision from him. And that's all we're waiting for.
Him being the fire marshal?
The fire marshal, yes.
Have they given any indication as to when they would come back and?
Well, his concern was the number of doors the students have to exit through. And the law says you don't, you go through so many doors, and that's what he's looking up. So, it's a fine line, yes or no. So, we're just waiting on his.
And if it's a no, we'll look at some, we have another idea that we'll see if they'll approve. It would, essentially, we would create the trap. We'd have to build a corridor as you walk through the second set of doors, to build a corridor, like a small corridor towards the main office, and try to replicate what we have at the other four schools, so it's a trap system. Yeah, we'd have to build one, where we kind of have one naturally because of the way the schools are built, so.
Right, I know you have the entry right to the stairs.
Right, and again, what, for those of you, for folks at home, if you go into the middle school, there's stairwell that comes down, and one of our concerns is, once you get buzzed in, you can just up those stairs. We want to shut that off, like we have here, like we did here. And what Mike was referencing was the number of doors that would be needed to seal that, even though there'd be crash doors, so everyone could get out.
Still an impediment, yeah.
This, you know, that question, so if it's not a positive response, then we'll look at the second option.
So, you need a motion to go out to bid?
Yes, please.
Was it already, was this, is this already in the budget?
No.
So?
We'd have to take it out of the fund balance.
For this year or next year?
We'd probably take it out of next year, because that's when the work would be done.
What are we looking at, estimate?
Mike, 15, 20,000?
Per or total?
Total.
Okay.
Based on our preliminary estimates, assuming everything.
This is not in our capital plan?
No. This wouldn't be, this, this would be, this is in addition to. And we're also working with the police department. Mike is gonna be touring the schools with Officer Black and Sergeant Raymond to go over the safety rooms that we've, the hide rooms that we've identified, and then what kind of things that need to go in there. So, if something did happen, people in the offices of each of the schools could go to a safe room, which would have cameras communicate, it'd be like a mini communication center, where they could call out and, you know, help direct the police, also connect to the PA system, you know, to evacuate the school. So, that will be coming as well. But this is just for the three schools to recreate what we have here at the high school.
Do I make that motion to go out to bid?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
So, we are back to item 7A, 2017, 18 budget.
Yes, as a result of there not being a second budget, or a second referendum question on the FTR, the budget committee's budget stands as of right now. They gave us a dollar more, which creates a deficit for us of about $250,000.
And could I ask about this foundation formula of 21, 341 that we got caught?
Yes, it was brought to our attention this past week that Ride changed the formula, the wording in the formula, which resulted in districts, including ours, I believe it was 21 school districts, losing additional aid from what was originally projected. Our number, I believe, was 21,000.
21, 341.
21, 341. And that, because the town, because of our timeline, that's, that's, money will have to be made up by the town.
Because that's what's, that's what's in the number.
If this holds, that's the, you're right, our number's the number. And, and again, it's a, it kind of disproves the, a lot of the back-and-forth that, oh, well, you're always gonna get more money from Ride, and, you know, the number is certain. Well, this is an example, it's not. And up, only for the past three or four or five years have we had budget certainty. Prior to that, for those of you who've been in town for a while, you know that every year that state aid number was always a flip of the coin, because they were doing it at midnight, that day being the general assembly on June 30th at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning. So, I hope this isn't something that's gonna, a trend that continues, but we are fortunate that we only lost 21,000. There, a district similar to us in size was Burrival, and they lost 340,000. So, the cuts could have been.
There also seem to be some big winners, too, though.
The big winners are Central Falls and Providence.
Yeah.
And Woodsocka.
Every budget season, especially since the funding formula went in, this isn't unusual. We typically have the first budget, which is what Ride requests, and then the governor's budget came in very close to that, it was under $3,000 difference. But then now, Ride puts in the, their data that they've collected over the year regarding, you know, all the information that need provide in other districts, and as a result of that, they're now saying that there was a million and a half in total statewide that is increasing. And the strange thing is, Providence by itself is going up 4 million, so that means the balance of every other community is going down to 2 million.
Coming from somewhere down.
So, there, as Mr. Rierick said, there are significant losers, in fact, most of the communities in the state. So, our decrease of 21,000 really isn't bad in the context.
I noticed East Providence, 600,000.
Yeah, Princeton, 840 or 860,000.
And that hasn't been the case over the last few years, when this last version of the budget comes out with the new data from Ride. So, I think Ride's gonna probably, it's gonna be incumbent on them to provide some explanations on why there were so many variations, especially in relation to prior years, when this, when this fresh data came out.
So, 243 plus the 120 from the additional students, plus the 20 for the, well, the doors, I guess, will come from capital, right? So, plus the 120 is 363? 243 original.
249, right?
I have 248, 99, but.
Oh, 249, so 249.
Well, that was after we took $45,000.
Oh, that's right. So, 249 was the 120, so 360.
And I just brought all these nice signs to show you through the years, the different budgets we've had, and mostly, as you can see, we went with the budget committee. We always try to do that, come together in the end. My favorite one is the big circle of opportunity with the town and the schools and everybody together. That's what we asked for again this year. We went to that last Saturday, going up, asking them all to come together with us. And as you know, it didn't work out, so that's why we have the middle sign, because we don't have a choice. We can't go in there and vote for, we have no number. I said it last night at the town council. I stood up and said the school department has no number in this budget this year. So, that's, that's very unfortunate, that, that, that came to that. And it was so small, it was, they asked us to stay under 1 percent, we only asked for .8. When I told people that Saturday, we're at the Rhode Island Association of School Committees, and they're like, what did you ask for? They said, oh, he asked for like over the cap, I said .8. They were, they were so shocked, because most of them do go to the cap. They need two to function, so.
The poor thing is, we asked for so little, getting lost.
It's true.
But thank you for everybody for working so hard with us through all this and sticking together. It's been very nice. Thank you.
So, what, what do we want?
For moving forward.
Yeah, so 369,000, what's the?
I, for one, don't want to lump them together quite that fast. The 120,000, as Mr. Rierick mentioned, is not a certainty.
Well, we have six more kids going.
But.
We have six scheduled deaths of right now, and if they go, and they spent the whole year, it'd be 120.
I mean, but if you were budgeting and you knew those six were going, you would have included 120 in the budget. You'd have to budget based on what you know.
I think we have to anticipate that they're gonna be there.
Right, you have to anticipate that they're gonna be there.
Yes. And again, if they don't, then.
Or you have to anticipate even if, like, based upon your, what, a half-oh, I mean, you'd have to, you'd have to estimate at least some of that.
You'd have to estimate at least half of them.
All right.
So, I mean, we have a bottom line already that was approved by the budget committee, and that will go on the docket.
Yeah.
So, it's a question of how to absorb the additional expenses that rest on our shoulders. I, I am of the thinking, for the 249,000 at least, that we do, for this one time, consider taking it from our reserves, as to not impact services. I think that there is a, there is a perception out there that our reserve has grown to a level where we can afford it, right or wrong. And, you know, we certainly understand how this does create a structural deficit, that as we sit here in 2018, going through this process, that will be in a even larger hole. I just don't have the appetite to cut teachers, programs, services at this time. I don't think we've had an, really, an opportunity to seriously go through that exercise. We're, we're here now. I would, in addition to, you know, wanting to support that, would like us to look at opportunities for savings within the budget, outside of this. And I would also like us to consider, and I don't know if it's something we would want to maybe consider on a future agenda, establishing a finance committee, made up in part of members of this committee, to go into more depth on the district's finances, maybe get involved a little bit more with the negotiation of contracts, for example, for the buses, special ed, some of those big ticket items that we seem to have very little control over. I think it's incumbent upon us to try to take some control, wherever it's possible. And that's just my ideas, and I'll put it out there for others.
Well, you know, I'm gonna scold on the deficit spending. I think that once you go down that path, you're not gonna be able to turn around. 250 is gonna become, 750 next year is gonna become a million and a half the year after. While you might not be cutting programs for this year's students, you'll be cutting programs for students the year after, or the year after that, and they'll be major cut. I think that, you know, we could just watch and see what, you know, if, if this was a different environment, perhaps, because I can think of Portsmouth-Lincoln, they have in the past used part of their reserves to, you know, pay for operations for one year, with the understanding, because you have to remember, they work with rational town councils, with the understanding from their town councils that the next year, they, the councils acknowledge and understand that, that revenue will have to be replaced the next year. So, I have seen Portsmouth-Lincoln, I'm sure there's probably other schools that have done it, but we don't, we don't function in that environment. We function in an environment where we can, I, we're, this budget committee next year, this, this extreme group that we have in town, they are gonna cut us every, every year. That's just, it's been happening since 2008. Any FTM I've ever gone to, any FTR we've ever seen, it's been a cut. And I just haven't, we have seen in the past, people in the community that have stepped up and haven't let those cuts go through. I have not seen that from the community in the last three or four years. The FTR budgets that have been put out, that have cut us, pretty much have, have gone through. So, my, my concern, strong, strong concern, as I always have said, that if, once we start down that path of deficit spending, it's not gonna stop. We're gonna be like the council, monthly moves money from Peter to pay Paul, to, they're, they're stealing money from every department, just, just trying to, to make things work. So, while other communities, it works, I'm not sure that it will in this one, so that's...
I'm encouraged that we're putting together a charter committee. I know it's not an instant fix. I'm also encouraged about the, what I've seen as the increased involvement by parents in our district, and becoming so much more enlightened as to the operations. And I'm not disputing for a moment that, that the budget committee next year will come back with another dollar. That's, it's almost a foregone conclusion, might as well just not even bother. But I, I am encouraged that our community this year has shown a great deal of disappointment in the fact that we weren't able to submit that optional budget. And to me, that shows the commitment that we, we can potentially count on next year to, to help get us out of the situation that you are absolutely right will occur. Listen.
Listen.
Ms. Black, Ms. Taylor?
No, so I, I mean, I think we don't have to decide tonight, and I think your idea about a finance committee is a good idea. I remember the first vote, we only got 668 people out, and I was shocked. I said, only 668 people are coming out in this town to support a school budget? I know it's grown, you're right, Mrs. Farnsworth, every year it grows a little bit, but as Deb said, we still get defeated. And this, this is, this is, Mr. Fiore, what do you think? You're the finance guy.
Having erred toward the side of conservatism with putting together budgets and doing this, I tend to echo Mrs. Polish's concerns, where if there was a one-time deal that our funding would be restored after one year, then I think you certainly could make the case to spend one year using a fund balance. But, you know, not seeing that on the horizon, I'd be very reluctant to venture down the path, because it's just gonna compound itself. In two years, we're gonna have, you know, maybe the 2% or 3% that we need to operate, plus have to backfill that one-time use that we just, just spent.
So, Mr. Rierick, I have a suggestion, do you think we have to go through the budget that we put for? See if there we can, what we.
I agree with Mrs. Polish and Doug's view. We, when we went to advocate for our budget, we said we didn't, we didn't want a deficit spend. If you take the money out, if the committee chooses to do that, what were, what were we saying that for then? Why will, you know, I was one of the strongest advocates for not doing that. And what are we saying to our supporters? That, well, let me get this, you know, not to be redundant, but, you know, we're saying this to get the budget passed, or to get support, and then we turn around and do the opposite. I don't think that sends the right message. Next year, it's happening again. We have currently, if, for uncommitted funds, we have about, if this continues and our increases remain about 500,000 or 600,000 a year, which is conservative, we continue this practice, because they'll give us a dollar, dollar, we'll be broke in three years. We'll be just where the town is. The town has been forced, as Mrs. Polish said, and we're all aware, of robbing every account every month to pay their bills. They're gonna be doing it even again next year.
It's gonna be worse next year.
It's gonna be worse. That's by design. That is by design, and I know a small group of people, you know, they came out and they voted, so democracy requires that to occur. But the committee has to choose, do you want that for us? Do you want us to become and operate like the town does? Because that's where everything. Because that's where everything is going. Finally, if you take the $250,000, put it towards operations, you don't get reimbursed for that. That's $250,000 that we could use, that we got $10 million worth of repairs. There's no reimbursement on that, so...
We've tried to do the responsible thing, and we've determined what our capital needs are, and we know what the goal is, and we're taking strides to get there every time we do have, you know, a positive year, and we put those funds aside. And we would be costing the town the match on those funds, so that's an important factor as well. And it's not like we're putting these funds aside and don't have an end game. We know we want to, you know, contribute toward the capital needs of our district.
You make very valid points.
And, but I just wanna, just one other thing I wanted to add. I would like the opportunity to go back, because I still have to have, I've had one meeting with Ms. Cragor at the region. We still haven't decided on all the layoffs for next year. So there could be some savings there, and I'd like to, you know, make, you know, for sure, because they run a little bit behind us, because they operate like most normal districts, you know, doing their budgets in late May and June instead of us doing them in January. So there's possible, I'm not saying it's $369,000 or $249,000, but there could be some, as there have been in the past.
Are there layoffs, do they follow state law?
Yes.
So it's the end of...
So it would have to be the end of, by June 1st.
June 1st.
And we would too. I mean, obviously, if, you know, we can't make up the, I mean, it's up to the committee how you want to proceed, but as of right now, we just have one layoff, and that's because a bubble class gets eliminated. So there's no, right now, layoffs due to this issue.
So Diane, you're, and I'm just, it's so against, I'm just trying to understand. So you're saying you don't want, you wanna just
No.
do it one time because your faith is in the community, not the Budget Committee.
I wanna do it one time if we can't find savings already embedded in that fiscal '18 budget.
Without cutting programs.
Without cutting, I really don't wanna cut programs. I don't want our children to suffer for this.
But is your belief that next year, if we do that, the community's gonna come to the table and support the fact that we did that?
I think it's incumbent upon us to generate that support as a team here, you know? Go out and solicit it, we'll have an entire year to work toward that goal. And I do see a number of parents getting involved, really at the younger levels now, and that's, it's fantastic, because they're representing the future of this district and having them, you know, and leaning on them to get the word out. And I do see that as an improved commitment by the community. Is it a guarantee? Absolutely not, but, you know, and most definitely, if Mr. Fiore, Mr. Ririck can find some savings in that budget that was presented
And find it.
without cutting programs, that's number one. Yeah. But I don't wanna cut programs unless they're deemed unnecessary. Don't do any, right, exactly, exactly.
Mr. Chair, I just point out that the law requires that, once the budget is adopted by the town, the law requires the school committee to amend its budget to bring in an accord with the... You know, there's no hard and fast on that, but you have to do it. You have to do it. It's not considered an adopted budget until such time as it is an accord. When there, in the past, where we've had, not necessarily in Tivon, where we've had Carullo actions, where, you know, they're a million dollars short, and they had to sue to get the additional funds from the town, we've advanced the theory that our plan to balance the budget is to sue the town and get the money for Carullo, through the Carullo action. So that was our, because if you adopt a budget that's in accord with a million-dollar cut, then you don't need the million dollars, right? So it's kind of a catch-22 on the law. But I just wanna point out...
I would think adopting the budget certainly by the end of this fiscal year would be...
Yeah, that would be fine, that would be fine, yeah.
And we have to send the letter over like we did last time.
But the point is, and typically, for many years, the amount of budget difference you have is not considered Carullo territory, you know, where you would consider it, it's not...
No.
Maybe next year.
Maybe.
From the sounds of it, most definitely.
I mean, I wish I had bright ideas, maybe I would've spoken earlier. The, I think there are a few fixed points here. One is by their actions earlier in the Budget Committee, earlier in the budget season, the Budget Committee clearly was interested in not giving us a dollar, but actually reducing the overall budget from even last year. And they needed their attorney's advice to realize that they actually couldn't do that legally. So that's where the $1 came from. Their intention was actually to make it less. So I share with sort of a lot of you the concern that this is really a strategy. And I think that, you know, the bookend on the other side of that was actually Mr. Katz's clear intention to not put anything before the voters. You know, it was duplicitous, it was mean-spirited, and it was clearly to remove any possibility that people could go out and choose, you know? You want the Budget Committee budget, go for it. If you want something else, go for that. And frankly, caught us up on legalisms which are still not proven. What we did not succeed in doing was showing that we didn't have an option to litigate this further, and therefore, we were not able to get a temporary restraining order and therefore access to the ballot. I think the other fixed point is that people have wanted us to live within our means, and I think we, at least in the last five years and really longer than that, have done that in an exemplary fashion, and actually, every other budget committee prior to this current group has usually commented on our ability to do that and complimented us for it. And that is the reason why there is a reserve fund, is because we have lived within our means. But right now, there is no dialogue, there is no choice, and we're actually flying blind. It would be nice if this had been before the voters, and we could at least say, okay, well, whoever turned out to vote, voted for the Budget Committee's budget, and therefore, they have directed us, the voters have directed us to find these cuts or take it from the reserve. But we don't have that. What I think we can still try to do is at least look at, you know, if, the voters have been deprived of a choice, clearly. I think we can still try and both give them a choice by opening that up to input, but also trying to illustrate what it means to do one or the other thing. And so I think before we say, "Take it out of the reserve," we really have to say, "Well, what's it gonna look like if we don't do that?" I agree, you know, we don't wanna cut services. We don't want to, you know, take this from somebody. I think it's, you know, I think it's doing ourselves a disservice and not being honest and forthcoming to say that we didn't, you know, we put forward a budget as lean as we thought it could be. So I don't have a lot of optimism that there are going to be savings in there, that are not going to affect programmatic issues. And so we are left with this, you know, this choice that is to either, you know, really make a fiscally poor decision or cut programs. I think we need to look and see what those two things mean, and hopefully, open it up to the public and make sure they understand that that's what we're doing. So I guess what I would suggest we do is ask Mr. Fiore and Mr. Ririck and the principals, and I would almost, and I would also like to see maybe a couple of us kind of work with them to sort of say, "All right, let's work through the budget, line by line, in the next two weeks, and present either at the meeting on the 23rd, or the first meeting in June should be like the 10th or something like that?
13th.
13th? And say, you know, "These are our choices. Please, parents, please, town council members, please, Budget Committee members, please, former members of any of those bodies, come and tell us what you think we should do. Our meetings are open, and our budget is a matter of public record."
I just want to point out layoffs have to be made by June 1st.
Huh?
Layoffs have to be made by June 1st.
By June 1st? Okay, so we can try and do that on the 23rd, and, you know, yeah, yeah. So I, you know, maybe that is the only, well, we have peels on for the 23rd.
I mean, we can have other meetings.
And we can have other meetings too, right?
But the 1st is the deadline. If there's gonna be program changes or layout, I mean, they have to be made by June 1st.
You could meet, discuss on the 23rd, and then hopefully, that's not the case. But if you wanted to do additional layoffs besides the one that I'm gonna bring forward, you can do it on the 30th or 31st.
Yeah, that's true, that's true. So I think we need to, we need to know what the choice is. We knew what the choice was before we were denied access to the ballot, and we were, that choice was taken away. So now I think we need to open it again. We have the capacity to do that, at least, you know, not a vote, but at least a meeting to hear some input. Mr. Crowell? No, I don't, I don't think so.
They believe that we have a structural surplus?
Yep.
They don't wanna identify programs, so why don't we identify the structural surplus? And when it doesn't happen, we give the goals to the town. We have to put together, from my understanding, once the budget's passed at the FDR, we have to put together a balanced budget.
Right.
Now, we've had, we've had surpluses in the last three budgets. Identifying the line items where those surpluses are banned, and reduce those programs, not programs. Soon as you reduce the programs, they never come back. Then we're gonna be having the same discussion next year after the Budget Committee gives us the dollar.
But what you're saying is you're gonna balance your budget based on mythical revenue?
I'm gonna balance our budget based on what our Budget Committee has recommended. That's what, that's what I would...
You're coming up with revenue that doesn't exist.
Well, I'm...
They don't do that.
Well, I know they don't believe that, but that's not how you put together a budget.
Then we're gonna continue going down this road again.
I agree.
We will...
At some point, you're gonna stop, or we don't have any classes left, we don't have any programs left.
So I guess I'm not, so you're suggesting we...
We take the money out of the line items, not programs.
But I don't think...
Whatever those structural surpluses are banned, you come up with that million dollars, you just use that surplus.
Well, the biggest portion of that is special ed.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Take out special ed.
You can't, it's mandated.
We have, we have surplus.
Last year.
Last year, so we're gonna take that surplus out of special ed. And when we get to the point where we don't have a surplus in this year's budget, you give the town...
All right, so Mr. Crowell, I think this is what you might be suggesting, which is, right now, our budget is, say, you know, for Program X, our budget is $100,000, but in the last two years, it's, or three years, it's averaged 95, so we sort of knock it down to 85, something like that?
Right. And take it out of a lineup, not out of programs.
Well, so...
This sort of discussion, the people I talk to around town, they believe, I do not agree with anything that Katz or Karen or that group is saying, because that's what they're selling. Every year, the school economy makes their budget work. They forget that every year, we cut programs to make it work.
Or don't add some.
Or don't add some.
Right, right.
Take it out of the line items, the average line items the last three years that have had a million-dollar surplus each year.
I don't think those actually exist, other than there have been...
But then if we're, we cannot deficit spend, and now we're gonna have to be in the middle of the year, and we're gonna have to cut that.
I, we've been pretty clear that our out-of-district tuitions increased for a while. They peaked, and now they're on the downswing, and that's how we accumulated funds through, because there's an 18-month lag between when we're estimating those sped expenses and what actually happens. So now the trend has turned where we know they're going up. We've had an issue this year of $200,000 that we've talked about. So we can't just say, okay, because our yearly surplus was due to out-of-district sped costs, that we can cut that line item, and we know we've already turned the corner on that. So, I mean, that's one way of putting forth a budget that's gonna meet that requirement, but it's not an honest budget.
You give me, it is a thought, though, in that vein. If we use the reserves, you use $300,000 of reserves...
I'm gonna use reserves, do you get the total?
I think you have to, to balance the budget. But you say, you say we're gonna use reserves, $300,000 in reserves to balance the budget, and you do, anytime you have anything that's coming in favorable, that goes back. You know, so if we say, spend is...
But we do, that's how we manage the budget anyway. We don't reallocate something that comes in favorable, it just falls out to the bottom line.
And, but again, you're still using reserves to balance your budget, but if things come in favorable, it basically, it goes back, so...
Once you eliminate program, it serves the kids, you never get them back. And we're gonna have the same conversation next, we're gonna have the same conversation next year.
Guaranteed.
Yep.
Because this Budget Committee is intent on bankrupting this town.
But that's my point, is if they keep, if they continue to just keep giving us...
A dollar, we don't have a choice. I mean, you can't, a $30 million budget doesn't just all of a sudden become a $29 million budget. I mean, at some point, we don't have a choice.
What they're gonna say, it's not a state secret, they're gonna say, "Your contracts all expire in June of 2018, give zeros." I've heard, we've heard it before, it's the same movie.
Yeah.
"Don't pay your employees anything." It's, that's what they're gonna tell you, I'm not agreeing with you, we're agreeing with them by any means. That's what they're gonna say, that's what they're gonna justify it with.
As a matter of fact, I think Mr. Karen stated specifically, that's what this slush fund is for, is to give raises.
What has to happen is, in the short term, we have to, the committee...
By the way, is not a bad thing.
Especially when we're lasting the state for giving...
That's right.
In the short term, we need to wrestle with the $249.
So, and he also had the charming idea that, well, if someone retires or, you know, someone gets recruited away to another district, then you can hire someone for less at step one. I guess that's true to a certain extent, but, you know...
Doesn't work that way.
I know it doesn't work that way, but anyway...
So you have retirement built into the budget, and...
It's not the retirements, it was, he was, you know, if you, if a relatively high-paid teacher...
First of all, top-step teachers, unless, again, they're in a skilled area, like we lost a few people, they're gonna go to a district that pays more. There's no guarantee that you replace that person with a step-one teacher, nor is there anything to say that you want.
You might not want it.
You may not want that person.
Right.
You may want someone with four or five years, or maybe, depending on what it is, like a physics teacher, you're gonna have to hire a retired physics teacher, because you can't find them. So you don't even, sometimes you lose money on the deal.
So when's your meeting with Sarah?
I have a meeting Thursday with Sarah.
So, you know, one of the things is, as Mr. Fiore and Mr. Ririck pointed out, that a lot of the reserve has come out of the $600,000, it started with $600,000 that was gotten back from the litigation, and then most of that seems to have come from getting special education costs under control. But, you know, you can only go so far there, and I believe that they will go back up relatively quickly. So what I would like to do is to have Mr. Fiore and Mr. Ririck and any of the other administrators that can, sort of, come up with what it would look like if we didn't take it out of the reserve, what it would look like if we took it out of line items or specific programs. I agree with you, I would be very reluctant to just cut a program in toto, because I agree with you that it is very difficult to get it back. And maybe if two of the other committee members could volunteer to work with them, to work through that.
But it's $300,000, where do you, I mean...
I don't know, and that's, and that is the problem with it. But, but until we sit down and try and look at it again, I think, you know, I don't think we can make this decision right now just based on, you know, taking one approach versus another.
I believe in the special ed, I believe we have two or three students that are aging out, they're turning 21. So there'll be some savings there, I know that.
Yeah, but generally, those are backfilled by new students.
Right, but there could be, when I meet with Sarah, there could be additional information that she can...
that she can provide me, because, again, they, they do their budgeting. Because we're so fast, we have these conversations all the time in May and June, because special ed catches up.
Right.
You know, they finally get their budget in, and we say, okay, we saved two aides or whatever. But that's after, again, that's the problem with the process.
Well, the yields have a little confidence, but we didn't...
Right. Their process is so much different than ours, and they start later. So, there could be some, something there. I don't think, again, it's not 369 grand, but there could be something.
No. I don't, I don't, I don't think it's, any of it's going to look good, but I think we have to know what it looks like first. And if it means, you know, cutting kindergarten, all right, that doesn't sound like such a great idea. But, you know, I think we need to understand exactly what we would need to cut to make the budget whole. Maybe what we would need to cut to make it whole, half out of the reserve.
And half out.
Half out of the, you know, I just, I think we need to look at it. And until we look at it, we can't make the case that, you know, there's nothing else to do but this, you know, but cut these programs, or there's nothing else to do but take it out of the reserve. And, boy, is this going to be a bad thing to, to sort of have to have a fight about next year. And unfortunately, again, based on behavior, I'm not speculating here, they will find some other way to keep us off the ballot. And that's, you know, the problem, is that the petitioner's budget was executed, you know, with full, you know, full good faith, under the guidance of the people that should have been able to tell us what to do, and frankly, met all of the requirements of the charter. How town solicitors could find things in the charter that are clearly not there is, remains beyond me. But...
I think one of my frustrations, and with all due respect, Seeta, is I just feel like the people in Tiverton aren't, we aren't ruling Tiverton. It's not charter law, it's whatever lawyer happens to be looking at the charter law. Because we had you say one thing, and we had the system say another, and then the judge...
Said something else. Another thing.
So, depending upon which lawyer, who all live from out, live out of town, looked at it, there were three different interpretations. So, that's, I'm hopeful, Diane as well, that the charter commission can do something.
The vagaries of it allow you to find in it whatever you choose to find.
And I think, Jerry, like you, it's one thing if people had a vote, and they voted against it, but to not have a choice, no voice, no choice.
No voice, no choice.
And, and, and basically, we're just ruled by attorneys at this point. That's, that's the truth.
Yeah, the winners.
It's not the attorneys. Turns it up. Anyway.
Well, I'm not blaming them. It's our fault because we're, you know, we're very well written, Charlie.
So, are there two members of the committee who might be willing to work with?
Um, certainly.
The two, the two-money people.
All right. So, Mrs. Barnworth and Mrs. Polish.
Can we consider Saturday meetings?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Maybe, except for this weekend, but I may be away, but...
Okay.
All right.
Another evening's fine as well.
Have it back on the budget, or on the agenda for the 23rd. Doug and Bill.
I'll meet with the principals first.
I mean, if any of the principals want to...
I, I would meet, I would meet with them first, and then meet with Diane and Deb.
All right. Announcements?
Huh?
Announcements?
I'd like to mention that Sally and I went to the RIAS, the annual meeting of RIAS on Saturday. And Sally has earned 200 hours of professional development through RIAS, so she was recognized for that. It was an excellent, I thought it was an excellent program this year.
She was a really good speaker, right?
One of the topics was transgender equality. And there is, which I didn't know, there's a transgender policy out in the state, but each district has to, excuse me, has to create their own policy. And Dr. Delakken was one of the speakers to our surprise.
I was going to say, wasn't, it was a really good speaker, wasn't there?
He spoke on medical marijuana, about legalizing medical marijuana. So, it was a really good day.
The risks of marijuana.
The risks, yeah. And we don't want to...
And, and, so, they were, there was, the speaker was there, and he was, he was marvelous. And, um...
How marvelous was I guess?
Oh, you were fabulous. I have no idea what you were talking about with the dendrites and everything else, but I've seen, I've seen the results in real life. Thank you very much. So, anyway, then there was another speaker that was talking, as Elaine said. And I, I stood up, and I said, you know, don't forget, we're surrounded with every district in the state, in the whole room. And I said, well, I said, if you're going to be judged by how many AP classes you have or your SAT scores, I don't know how it is, but, I said, if you're going to be judged by climate and atmosphere and culture, there's nothing better than Tiverton High School. And then I explained how we had the, the children come, and I said, the students did exactly what you did today. They talked about their experiences with all these things, and their families, and, and what they went through. You could have heard a pin drop. The kids were so respectful. So, I said, so that's what we are about, Tiverton High School. So, just got to tell you, well, it was a very, very proud moment for us, and for everything they do.
I'd also like to recognize our, all our teachers, because today is Teacher Day, Teacher Appreciation Day and Week. I want to thank them for all their hard work. They are certainly underappreciated by many, just not here in our community, but in communities across the country. My other announcement is that Special Ed has their regional award night on May 22 at 6:30 here in the auditorium.
Okay. Can I have a motion to move an executive session?
I'll make that motion.
I think you got to write it, read it out.
Oh, is that what I just signed up for?
Yep.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we move into executive session under RIGL 4246-5A1, job performance, character, physical, or mental health for the superintendent's evaluation. Do I have a second?
Keep going. Keep going. Nope, keep going. Take them all at once.
Okay. We also have RIGL 4246-5A4, discussion of general security. We have RIGL 4246-5A2, collective bargaining, litigation, subsection nine, Council 94, grievance and grievance procedure. We have RIGL 4246-5A2, legal advice, litigation, financial town referendum. Do I have a second?